Okay, one o'clock, we'd like to get started again. Chad, you're up.
How are you? So, I don't have any slides. I think that Chris, Chris and I talked actually several times, we've talked a few weeks ago. I know that some other folks have already also spoken as well. Principally relates to non-transportation related issues with the, with the village. We, we have identified and Chris and I have been actually working on this for a long time. We've identified about fifty-one pieces of real estate that are non-buildable. There are clear homes for probably half of that. It's very clear, like for example, the one foot next to the fairways on the club, that, that needs to go to the club. Some, some of the, there's some parcels in Cape Fear Station that by deed have to go to the association. There are, there are swales that clearly should go to Chris in the village. We have, for example, I know over in Cape Fear Station here, I mean, on Cape Fear Trail, the beach access, we own about twenty-two feet to the right of that beach access. Well, my sense is that's probably even though that if we, if no one wants to take it, we'll go to the association. My sense is that should go to the village relative to each access. The mayor's aware of and Chris is aware of what we're trying to do up on the hill with the permits and the donation and the land swap up there. You all have, you're short about five thousand feet of, of impervious surface up, up on the hill. To the, to the
Yes, curves.
Yeah, the S curve to the south, to the south, yeah, to the south of, to the south of Capit Charley's.
Gotcha.
Okay, there's a, there was a homeowner that wanted to buy a lot, combine it, build a house. Mayor, we've worked on this for two years. And then they were gonna take another lot and donate that to, to the state land trust, okay? We have, we still control the master permits for all of that. In that investigation, our idea was, hey, we'll strip out property they're gonna donate, doesn't need, doesn't need any camera. We'll strip out that camera permit and I'll work with Chris and give that allocation to you so you can take that beach access parking area, one, get it where it needs to be, but then have an extra two thousand, three thousand feet to expand that space. We also found, we did that one too, that the village needs about two feet on each side of that road that will need impervious allocation. Good news is that we got all that done and there's plenty of allocation. I think we have like thirteen thousand impervious feet left over that we can do something with you guys on that. A lot of it's just blocking and tackling and things like that. The other, the only thing that I'm aware of, the only, the only road that I'm aware of that we have not turned over yet is a small section, probably about half the size of this room heading into the hammocks. That's gonna require the village, limited, the association and the club. Because the club, and the club has an easement across that road for the cart path that go from one fairway to the other. That easement also crosses association property and it crosses the road. So, the, the only issue there, I think, and I think we're all squared away on the engineering on that section. We did, we did, we did have some issues and some concerns, but I think we solved those way back when and we're all good to go. But that will require when the village takes that road, that they'll still have to create an easement and I, and I think they'll have to create a new easement rather than just take the existing easement. Create a new reason for the club to cross there and an easement for the association will also have to grant an easement to the, a new reason for the club to cross its pieces on both sides of that road. So that, that one, I think, is the most complicated that we've got. We also have, we also have some property out there that has reverter rights. There are some property reverter rights that is clear what we're gonna do. For example, Obaldi and the Conservancy all have reverter rights to limited. So if they stop doing what they're supposed to do, those properties revert back to limited. We've got that solved. We're gonna probably transfer the reverter right to the foundation. Makes sense. Mitchell's created the foundations, both of those to begin with. It makes sense for the master foundation to be the reverter right going back and get limited out of it. There are some other pieces out there that have reverter rights and we've got to figure out what we want to do. Do we want to hold them for an extended period of time and deal with it later? Does it make sense if a reverter right should go to the village? If it's not used, then, then we do that now.
Are these unused properties, Chad?
Yeah, they're non-buildable. They're, most of it's non-buildable or it's like, for example, up on, on the hill, what somebody did was they bought up, they bought another lot, combined the lots and the one lot's vacant, they bought it for impervious surface coverage, but there's a reverter right that's if they don't, if they, you know, sell the house to split it back up, it goes back. There's a few of those out there like that. And I don't know, Chris and I really could talk about it. Do we want to do this as a basket transaction and try to nail all the ones we know? That's what I'm doing with the association in the area. We're trying to work through a basket. You know, it's just easy to do it. It's all, you get the title searches all done at the same time. You have one quote unquote closing for a dollar or whatever it is. I think Chris and I had talked about, but we'll try to do that. We're also working with the state property office on the land along federal road adjacent to the old boathouse. So the way that works is that the Mitchells, when they donated the forest and donated all that land, on that stretch, there's two pieces. Part of it's the old Cape Fear Trail that the Conservancy leases for a dollar and has the, the, the pathway through there. Some of that property is clearly owned by the state. Then there's this other property that's still clearly owned by us, primarily the stuff right across from where the old boathouse was. And then there's some property in the middle that is, is undetermined. We're working with the state property office right now saying, look, either you own it or we own it. If you want it, we'll give you a quick claim deed and it's yours. We're working with Chris on, maybe there's a way we can resurrect the old boathouse and take whatever we've got there and move it to the, to the mainland side. Okay? And envision all along that corridor there is property that if we don't, whatever we do or don't do, we subdivide it. That one's gonna have to come to you with Chris, combine what's there, get it all meets and bounds, get it recorded, have its own subdivision. In that process, there's, there's property along federal road on the marsh of the creek side. And at the turn, if you guys know where there's the old, the old railway, the old railroad piece of equipment that's there in that corner, that, there's that, there's a piece there that should probably go to the village to help alleviate or work with that intersection long-term. There's a piece there, we'll, we'll wanna work with the gentleman that owns that house right there. But that piece there, we should probably do something with you all on that corner too. But that one's another one that's not simple. It's complicated. We get the state property office involved. We're working through that now. I think Bruce Merrick is, is waiting for those guys to say yea or nay, or what do y'all want to do, right? We solved the, one of the, the wellheads this year, one of the old wells that was originally part of the well system that you all did not take, that we transferred to the association, but the equipment was still there. The club didn't want it. We didn't want it. So we worked with, with the association, the club, and we pulled that out and cut up all that stuff and cleaned up that whole area. So that, that's good, but that property belongs to the association, but we got
Keeping the one.
But the one across the fairway you're keeping.
One across the number one fairway, one right up on the hill. We use that. We've got skater equipment in it.
So that one we kept, we kept that one fully functioning, ability to function. That's on the, the east side of the fairway. There was actually one almost catty corner on the west side in the bushes there. And we did that and we had Wayne, you know, cut the tank up because it was huge and take it off the island. But that's, that's pretty much what, what we're focused on right now with the village in terms of on-island stuff is really backfilling on some, some loose entanglements and some garbage that we kind of just need to clean up and figure out where it is and how to deal with it. I think that from the declaration standpoint on all the property, the Mitchells still want to maintain the control of the declarations on, on the lot. Some, at some point in time, when you all, you know, vote me off the island and I pack my bags, we'll, we'll need to have some, we'll, who's gonna be the decorant? Who, who is the Mitchell family gonna assign as the master decorant on? I mean, every, pretty much every single piece of property has decorative currents on it, covenants. Who's gonna be the master of that longer term? Of all of the property. Like, all of the property, every, everything in the commercial district has declarations from the original developer. And those declarations still apply, right? Like a lot of the properties down in Cape Fear Station still have massive declarance on them. Where the decorant can step in and say, hey, if, for example, the association's not doing what they need to do from an architectural standpoint, the decorant can walk in there and, and do what he needs to do. There's very few pieces out there that don't have, that don't have decorant rights. So at some point in time, the village is gonna need to assign its decorant, decorant rights to somebody on the island. So in twenty-five or thirty years, you know, people aren't just doing what they want to do without some mechanism of someone being able to say, wait a second, declarations on the deeds say you cannot build a three-story brick building and paint it purple regardless of the ordinance or whatever it might be that those masters. So that, that includes every single piece of commercial property we sold. Every single piece of commercial property we sold has a hundred-page document in terms of building. Peter's seen it. The issue that we run into on that document is light on the landscaping is where it's, it's most defunct, is on the landscaping side.
So this, you're talking predominantly the harbor area and maritime way?
On the commercial stuff.
Yeah.
On the commercial stuff. Then we have non, we have residential covenants on lots of property out there that still impact Cape Fear Station and, and everything else. So it's one of those, it's just another one of those checks and balances that we probably need to deal with at some point in time.
And in your view, Chad, timeframe wise, when, I mean, do we need, is there something we need to be working on now or is
I think, I think we can talk about that. I mean, it really boils down to the, you know, the Mitchells really haven't indicated what they want to do.
Okay.
I think my, my thoughts were, I, I think that in general, they thought, well, they'll just, they'll give, they'll give the decorant rights to the association. I'm of the opinion that that makes sense for some things.
Yeah.
And it doesn't make sense for other things. It doesn't make sense for infrastructure, decorant rights. I think infrastructure decorant rights should go to you guys. But they haven't green-lighted how they're gonna deal with the declarance, declarations. They're, we've talked about it. What they have said is the reverter right stuff, yes, I can go do that. Decorant right stuff, we need to wait and see how things, how things shake out, right? So that's, that will be something that would be towards the end. But until then, you know, myself and we'll, we'll, we'll work with whoever on the decorant rights. Like for the most part, when that comes up with the association, I'm like, hey, whatever the members want to do, we're gonna do. I'm just signing off. Whatever the village wants to do, we're gonna sign off and sign off. That's pretty much how I've treated all of that stuff. So there might be some things that should, that I think, just like the reverter rights, some of the stuff should go here and some of these fifty-one pieces of property should go to you guys. Some should go to the association. Some should go to the Conservancy. Some should go to the club. We'll work that out. But I think that Chris and I, Chris has got a good handle. He has seen the map. We have that all mapped. And he's seen the map. Like I know, for example, another example is on the, on the southwest corner of the intersection where the bridge is. So the Cape Fear Trail side of the corner there. We still own that entire swale area. Well, that makes sense for Chris or the village to have that swale area. As they redesign that intersection, it makes sense for you guys to have that swale area. Whether you want to use it for stormwater, whether you want to use it to expand the road, change the curve, change the turn, that makes sense for you guys to have that. So that's pretty much where we're at. We've got, we really have on the deck, we have the ability to build six more houses down at, at Cape Fear Station and add that to SF twenty-two if we want to. That's on deck to do that this year is to build six houses down at Cape Fear Station. Well, I mean, the market's still there. We'll see what, we'll see where things go relative to the dollars, the cents and all the things we've gotta do. The other thing we're, we're working with the yacht club primarily is, is I understand the position of the village. Not sure I agree with it. But what we'll have to do is we'll have to figure out how we're gonna deal with that spoil island and, and get the marine dredged.
And that spoil area is almost but stoppers.
Doesn't matter. It has to be redone. It has to be redone every time.
The bank.
Yeah, all the banks have to be redone anyway. That's all part of any dredge permit that we're gonna deal with. The issue is I thought we had a long-term solution for that. But now we don't. So, you know, we'll continue, you know, I, I think several years ago, the village needed to do some dredging out there and they said, hey, can we, can we dispose there? And I said, sure. But in ten years, what does that look like in ten years, right? And remember, the spoil island permit, we control and own. And the drip, there's, there's no dredge permit without spoil island permit. There's no spoil island permit without the dredge permit. So we've got to figure out how we manage that kind of stuff, just like the permit. All the good work that Kevin Arada did on the speed for the creek. And, you know, four-stroke versus two-stroke, he did all that work and then to find out, he comes in for you guys to vote on it. And oh yeah, but the only thing is we control the permit, doesn't matter, you know, so we went ahead and signed off on that. But there's an example of we, we don't control the permit, not the village, right? So we've got all those kinds of things. Master stormwater permit, all the master, I mean, the master stormwater permit fits the entire area. We still control and own that. The, the master camera permits for virtually everything on the island that's developed and enveloped, those permits are still ours. Who, who gets, where does that go? Where's the safe haven? What's the, what's the right place long-term? We're not dealing with that today. But, you know, those are, those are really important. You know, I, I, I joked around with Chris and he knows. I know we're focusing on the ferry, but the nuclear weapons, those are the nuclear weapons that we cannot let get put into anybody's hands. It's gonna be a derel, it's gonna be a derelict about it, right? So I don't know what we do on that, but those master stormwater permits, those master camera permits, all the dredging permits, the creek permits, all those permits, that's what Bruce Merrick's running around maintaining those permits and working on those permits. I think there's thirteen of them right now that are island-related. You know, longer term, we're gonna have to sit down and collaborate on, on what's the right home for those. Is it the association? Is some of the association, some of the village? Don't know. I think right now those are the two places that it would go. I like, I like on a lot of that, I think it should be the village because, you know, they, they control the ordinance. And so therefore they can tie the ordinance to the permit capacity. And right now we have extra. We have extra stormwater. A lot of extra stormwater down at Cape Fear Station because we downs, we downzoned. You know, massive amounts. Originally, if you recall, some of you that have been here a while, down there, there was gonna be a hotel, a conference center, six hundred condominiums with a bridge going over the alley to, to where we did, where we downzoned and did Southern Living. That was six hundred three-story condominiums looking all over. So all that stormwater permit was designed for that. So we have, in Cape Fear Station, we have lots of extra stormwater capacity in the permit. Which is a good thing to have because I know that, that, you know, for example, the Conservancy might be a little tight on their stormwater. I've talked to the mayor. We can just peel off some and give it to them, right? But that's the, you know, what do you do with that excess capacity? My feeling is, well, it's not worth anything. It's only, it's only good to, for, for building relative to the ordinance. So it makes sense to tie those together. You know, you don't want to have somebody that can build something by right, by ordinance, but they don't have the stormwater to do it. It's off, you know, in some some great-grandchildren, Mr. Mitchells, in fifteen years, it's gotta be found to, you know, sign off on a stormwater allocation, right?
And so
Those are, those are longer term. I think the permits are the longer term issue is, is those are, that's not for this year. That's not for the short run. But that needs to be something that's all on your radar screen.
And so therefore it sounds to be like, once limited is built out, all they're gonna build out, then that's when we start handing stuff off, right? Or
I think Ryan, I'm gonna start handing stuff off before then because we still have commercial property. We can build on, still get, redevelop stuff that we wanted to do. But I think the, the non-buildable pieces and the things that make sense that we know whether we know long-term or today, if we know long-term and today, where those things need to go and we've identified fifty-one that we know where it needs to go, we need to do that now.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
I could take that, those fifty-one and apply to that housing stock map to then show, okay, right now I'm showing eight hundred and two parcels or unimproved. Well, depending on what those fifty-one look like, it can reduce that number.
True.
So our percentage of developed island goes up from sixty-two to say seventy percent. But it also helps us with AP and planning with the wastewater treatment plant. And so there's other things that we can visualize when we think about island buildout.
Because right now, those, those pieces are, I don't know, an add-on for all the water and sewer. And there won't ever be water and sewer to those fifty-one pieces. But right now you have to reserve for those fifty.
Right. Because by head thinking about, you know, silt and, and, you know, there are people wanting to, you know, what can we do? Do we want to build eight hundred more homes on the island? What's that gonna do to us from a traffic standpoint, from a market stand, mar, maritime market standpoint, from a ferry? And so, you know, if knowing about those fifty-one, if, can, are there other lots that could be identified that are, that may be close to that, that people own that probably don't intend to build on? Have a conversation with those people. They could turn those over, donate them to silt and we can work these numbers and solve multiple problems.
Yep.
Makes sense?
Yeah. Yeah. So I know that there's nine that are clear need to go to by, by deed and by covenant, have to go to the association. Now they can reject it and not take them. They, they're all pieces in and around Cape Fear Station is what they are. Chris is aware of one. Very large one. It's, it's down between Portsmouth Way and East Beach. We have a very large piece down there. That's about a block and a half in from, from the current parking disaster at that beach access. You guys all have to fight with the neighbors on what you want to do or not want to do. I've identified, we've identified, actually, Chris, I think
Well, remember that piece is counted towards the open space calculation for the
Right.
So we really can't
Can't mess with that, but that's a big piece that could be, I don't know if you can use it. It's open space, but can you use it as a thru, a thoroughfare or not?
Pass for active recreation, actually.
Right.
You know, it's still quote, open space.
So that one by covenant needs to go to the association, which will allow you guys to decide what you want to do. There's another piece on, that's actually, if anybody remembers where Mayor Byrne used to live, or Bill Byrne used to live in the cul-de-sac down there. There's a great deal of land between his cul-de-sac and the road. I think, Chris, did you go with myself and Carrie, Carrie Stilherr, we drove down there. That is, that piece is located right across from the entrance to, on the upper side of the road to property that the association has. You could easily put down some, some base material, not saying stone, you know, maybe it's just wood chips. And that would be convenient enough for boat trailer storage parking. You can get in and out of there with a grade. It's very, very, could be very, very well concealed. There's plenty of buffer for no one in that cul-de-sac. Mr. Byrne, you know, wouldn't be able to see it from his house or see through the trees. There's plenty there. Carrie, what's that, about two and a half acre piece over there, maybe? We went saw, right before COVID, we went for a ride. I don't know, Chris, if you were on that road, that discussion or not, but I know we've got issues at the creek access with overload and the association has overload access for, for its current boat storage. That could be a third place that you all, you guys can all work on that piece. That piece there is not required to go to the association. I think right now the idea is to do it to the association so that if they wanted to do something for additional boat storage parking, it's right down the street from the creek access.
Yeah, the commons part is that, I guess that was originally to go to the village because we ended up getting that.
Yep.
But that other piece you're saying
It's across, it's across
Access forty-two parking?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a couple there that if there's an overlap, we'll just get with carrying the association and, you know, figure it out.
Thank you.
Other than that, it's just transportation. Did, I did talk with Chris today. We, we seem to have a recurring theme with trailers on the island. People bringing trailers over on the barge.
The ones being used is
Huge trailer issue.
Gotta, gotta, gotta
We have, we have, we, we discovered in the last sixty days, there's a, a new angle now where folks are loading five to seven empty trailers on the mainland. And we bring them over and then they take them off. The problem is, is that when we get here, they're not here to take them off. So now we've got delayed times for people to even board the barge and unload the barge. And then if our guys end up doing it, then all those trailers are left on the barge landing.
Because they're using one truck.
They're using, playing this game with one truck. So it takes forever for them to load and unload. And so what we're gonna do is we, we worked on it today. Byuna and I worked on it today. We're gonna have a policy that says, look, you're only allowed to load and unload two empty trailers for barges. This stuff where you're loading seven trailers with the same vehicle and unloading seven trailers with a different vehicle on the island, but it's only one vehicle to load. We don't have the turnaround time and frankly, there's not enough space in the barge landing for them to leave six or seven trailers. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna basically float that and Chris and I and Josh are aware of, the chief are aware of the usual suspects that will be impacted. And we will reach out to them directly via phone to say, look, you know, hey, where's this? So Wayne Cron's all good. I talked to, we talked to, to Mr. Cron relative to all his stuff and your stuff. This won't impact how he operates because he doesn't operate that way. He never has more than two empty trailers on there. And other than that, the only thing I'll end up doing that's not really village-related, that, that will work with the commercial associations, we will stand up. Edward Teach Commercial Association will stand up Maritime Waste Association. Limited will still control the Maritime Waste Association. It won't control the Edward Teach Association. And then I want to really fix it happen is those two commercial associations should just say, you know what, let's just merge it all together. But I'll let them decide to do that. I'm not gonna force them to do that. Let them make the decision to do it. There's no, there's no common property. So the only reason for the association is for architectural review. That's it. There's no, there's no walkways. There's no common anything. So it's just really making sure that no one gets too crazy in ten or fifteen years down the line relative to anybody else. So that's, that's all I've got. We've got on the transportation side, non-village litigation issues. We will be repowering, we repowered the Patriot last year. We got a, a grant for that. We've got another small grant. And we're gonna use that to repower the Ranger. Still, parts are still a huge problem. You know, you can get, you know, a seven hundred thousand dollar engine, but you can't get a twenty-nine dollar part out of Taiwan. I mean, no, it's literally, that's literally the case. That's literally what happened. I mean, it was like, okay, we talked about, if, if we can't get it here, that's one thing. Because what, what just, we were gonna send, you're flying to Hong Kong to get the part, right? I mean, it's cheaper that way, right? But it's just, they're not available. It's just like, you can't get it, you know, and that's, that's killing folks like Commons and killing folks like John Deere. You know, they've got their, they've got their personnel in these plants and they still can't get, you still can't get it done. But I think we're good to go. We need two generators to repower it. We've got, we know where they are. We're supposed to get them. We'll probably look to repower the one cat right between the Easter and Memorial Day. The one cat right between the Easter and Memorial Day time slot. And if we miss it, or we lose a part, we'll just run three boats. We'll run the cat and the two, the two. The two model halls during. During the Memorial Day or the Easter time slot if we need to. Other than that, the other thing we're working on that the mayor and I know the mayor Potem will work are aware of. On the main ferry only, so not the contractor boat, but just the main ferry. Moving that to a forty five minute schedule to work towards the on time performance. We're we're working with the utilities commission on that. Believe it or not, notwithstanding the conversations we had a year ago with them, with you all. They came back and said, hey, what, how much are we going to save? What's going to be the financial savings? There won't be any, just so y'all know, there won't be any personnel savings because we're still going to have the same time block. There will be a small amount of fuel savings. But that's really it. And and if you wanted to say you could amortize some of the. Hourly wear and tear in the engines instead of doing the oil change every, you know. Ninety days, it might be now every ninety eight days or something, but very minimal financial, but. Public staff wanted whatever savings there would be. So we ran that data, we sent that to them. I think it'd all be a good thing because then, you know, we'll have the time to make up between the, I mean, the boat runs. We need to do. So we're working with that on that. You know, we appreciate the support you've given us on that. And, you know, as we get closer, before we go and pull the trigger. We'll get down and make sure we're all good to go. You know, our. We've had no negative, I haven't received any negative, maybe I will now. I haven't received any negative. Feedback on that for the main ferry only. On social media or or indirectly. I know that the the business owners. Were concerned that that would also impact the contractor ferry because then it would really, no, contractor ferry, we don't have that issue. Because we don't have the volume passengers, we don't have the baggage and we can, we can just do, we can run those all. So they're covered. They should be fine on that. You know, I say that, but I haven't heard any, no, haven't had anybody say, hey, don't do this. This will be a good thing, get us an on time performance and allow us to make up the slack. Because as you all know, we get one. We get one code one in the morning, we're done. We're done for the rest of the day. There's just no way to make up fifteen or twenty minutes with a thirty minute schedule. You just can't do it. So we're working on that. I think that'll be good.
Chad, is that a move into forty five minute schedule? Like, have you set the the times yet or just?
No.
Concept of.
We've worked through a schedule. And so the issue boils down to is that actually the the boats in the morning, we had to start earlier because those will be a one hour swing time. I think I was talking to the mayor or maybe the mayor Pro Ten. The issue for the top of the schedule is not just the ferries, it's the trams.
Right.
We've got three hundred and fifty more homes built since two thousand ten. So the trams running down there, they can't make that turn. So the issue to that, Mr. Thomas, is that. The first run in the morning. Will end up being an hour turnaround. No one will like know it outbound because we got to get the crews over here. They have to get set up and they need an extra fifteen minutes to run. The tram schedule out of cold, out of cold stock. So that first morning one will be an hour, not forty five minutes. And so then we we do something like, we, you know, we still try to time that first one at the same time we have now, whether it be seven thirty or eight thirty and do that. There are, as you know, there, or you maybe don't know, there's two or three islanders that actually live on the island and commute off. And there's.
I know.
There's a couple of those that have historically ridden the same ferry boat off for years. I've talked to those folks. The good news is is they ride the contractor ferry off. They don't even ride the main ferry. They're on that contractor boat and it's the same, she knows, it's the same, the same two people every morning for the last. Fifteen years. So we did get with them, they they won't be impacted. What we assumed in the analysis. Is that, for example, July, you know, July fourth week. What are people going to do? Are they gonna book? The earlier boat, fit the one that's fitting out fifteen minutes earlier than before? Are they going to book book the one that's fifteen minutes beyond? We went through and we kind of figured out where the slack is and the good news is we get to get a little bit of insight relative to this electronic ticketing software as well. Is that the way we worked it is we assumed that. Depending upon the past. Some will ride, will take the later boat, i.e. primarily the vacation renters. The general path will probably take the later, the later boat schedule, the ones that are on the annuals, the ones that are on. You know, bulk forties, the ones that people live here. The assumption was the majority of them would actually take the earlier one off rather than the later one. It works out to about fifty, fifty five, forty five split. And we'll see where it goes. And if we need to make a change, we'll make a change. And we can still always run the bump boats during the height of the season. The electronic ticketing, eighty five percent of every ticket we sell now is 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 electronic, whether it be online or on the app. I think that that's probably going to be about what might get to ten percent at some point in time, but we still have a lot of. Folks. That. Primarily on the contractor boat that want to pay cash. They just want to buy a paper ticket, pay cash and go. They don't have the credit card. They don't have the app. They don't have whatever it needs to be done. So I think that's kind of where we're at. That's from an industry standard standpoint. A six months from start to where we ended up at eighty five percent. I mean, that's just really high in terms of the use. Yes.
So that eighty five percent is I mean, reserved where they've made.
No, they bought their ticket. Online, online. We have not, we did not have, I know there was a lot of social media stuff that we were going to have this Armageddon. With 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 issues with with the electronic ticketing and the preference now, now, you know, you can't. You can't cheat any, right? It's it's, it is what it is. We had a lot of cheating boats. You know, and I, and and in a way it was when, when all the businesses that we sold, I mean, we sold twenty three businesses since I've been here. From the maritime market to all the restaurants, all that stuff, all those employees used to work for us, if you guys remember. And so the command from up high could say, I don't care if you miss four boats. You're standing aside. And you're letting the customer go, well, we don't own those businesses anymore. Those owners have a different view. Of that. Shame on me, shame on us for not thinking about that they might not have the same view, but. If that's one of the reasons why it feels like this. This capacity issue snuck up on us. It 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 kind of eased up on us and then kind of hit us all at once when we started selling the bigger, bigger shows club. Big, big user of the ferry, right? Market, big user of ferry. We didn't feel those impacts all at once, but we got into that two thousand eighteen nineteen. When we sold off last restaurants, when we sold off Shoals Club, we did all that. You know, that was a, that was a couple hundred employees at the end. Now they're all still working, but those are two hundred employees that aren't standing aside. Two boats to let the guests and the residents on. So that was, that was one of the issues we had, but we have seen, we have, we had a twenty two percent decrease in bump boats. Since implementation of the electronic picking. I think that's because you can all see exactly how many are there. We've had very few issues where someone that. Was riding a bulk forty. That did not do a reservation, but got in the standby line with the fifty. You had very few of those folks, you know, not get on their boat. You know, the drill, there's probably a lot of you right here that that could book your ferry, but don't because you don't need to. I think the fact that 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 marker's out there of a hundred reserved. And you can all look at that and see that, and you can look and see the trams, see the tram schedules. And see what's full and what's not. And you you have all that transparent data. Before it was transparent on the tram, on the tram. But what we found out was we had a lot of people booking trams that didn't have a tram eligible ticket. Now you can't do that. We had a lot of people booking trams for others. Now you can't do that. We had a lot of businesses on the island. That were using the tram schedule as a way to relocate their employees in. So for example, household being in house cleaning, right? Rent an Airbnb, you rent anywhere in the world, you can't come in till four o'clock. Well, they would stagger their crews so that they would do these houses and they could. Order trams for those guests to fill those houses sooner or later as the day went on. And that's how they ran their payroll. That's how they ran their schedules. So that's all changed. In that regard, so that that works. It's it's all out there for the user, but. I would, I would think too, we, the forty five minute schedule will have even fewer bump boats. There's one we can anticipate it and there's time to get on the ferry over here to run two ferries on that same time block with that extra fifteen minutes. So we're working on that.
Don't mean to cut it short here, but we're about ten minutes past.
All right. That's where we're at. I'll keep you posted on that. And I, my hope is to just let Chris run with the fifty one pieces. And, you know, obviously everything's going to go for you in the end, but in terms of us being able to just tinker around and spitball, that that will be planned.